All right, it's six o'clock, we're gonna get started with our regular meeting, please, at the Mount Pleasant City Commission, and we'll use this as a call to order, and don't mind, we've got Ms. Baker here this evening to do our prayer for us, and Vice Mayor is gonna do the pledge for us, so if you don't mind, please stand. Ms. Baker, would you like to come forward?
Please.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for another day, God, we thank you for another opportunity on this side of eternity. Father, we just ask, oh, Lord, that you bless each and everyone under the sound of my voice. Father God, and as business is done for the city of Mount Pleasant, God, we ask that you grant godly wisdom, that you lead, God, and direct all decisions, Father. Father God, let everything be done decent and in order. God, we thank you and give you the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, united people, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, lady.
Uh, Mayor, I make a motion that we...
In a minute.
Uh, suspend the rules to move, uh, four A into, no, I'm sorry, five A into the end of this service.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules and move five A to the end. Ms. Hooks is not here yet, but we do know she is owner of what?
Renate.
We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And just so you know, if she can make a motion to move it back up if she gets through quickly.
It need be, okay, perfect. Roll call, please, ma'am.
I'll do it. Ms. Granberry?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
Mr. Harvey?
Here.
I'm sorry, we don't have Ms. Loretta here, our normal city reporter, so.
All right. Number four, approval correction of minutes from prior meetings, we have two, the study session dated August the 11th, and the regular meeting of August the 16th, and once you've had an opportunity to review, I'll entertain a motion for both.
Move that we accept the minute.
Got a motion in a second?
That's where both of them run.
That is correct. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Five A, we have had suspended for the moment. B is the mayor's appointment, uh, for Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Billy Rain. Kate, would you like to speak on him for a moment?
Uh, he's somebody that I have worked with, and I've filled his work with, uh, he was the, um, Fire Inspector for the City of Columbia, recently retired, lives on Hoover Mason Lane, and I think he would do a great job at, uh, building and zoning, and, uh, we have met with him, and he is willing to serve.
Any questions for Kate?
Good that he's a citizen.
He, he lives on Hoover Mason Road, I mean, Lane, sorry.
All right. Entertain a motion to approve Billy Ring as for the Board of Zoning.
I'd like a motion, Mayor, to approve Billy Ring as from the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mount Pleasant Housing Authority, Linda Fitzgerald, and there's been a change, just for everybody's information, to their bylaws, that they would like to have someone that is a resident of the housing authority to be on the board, and...
This is their recommendation.
This is their recommendation, this came from them. So with that being said, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like a motion for Linda Fitzgerald on Mount Pleasant.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Go into unfinished business from the prior meetings. Ordinance 2022-1098, this is a public hearing and a final reading, an ordinance revising the community center rental rates and establishing a facility agreement for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
And Mayor and Commissioners, we went over at the study session, kind of the changes, not many changes since the first reading, uh, we did replace the word "uniformed officer" with "licensed officer," we added private security to the list of agencies to provide when we need security at an event, um, we added that, uh, less C would forfeit their deposit if they're not, and they would not be eligible for rentals in the future if they forfeit their deposit, and that we have video surveillance at the community center at all times. I think all the other things, everybody was okay with, if anybody has any questions, I'm prepared to answer them.
Anybody got any questions for Kate on this? Think we've all had plenty of opportunity to review it. Entertain a motion. Do that we accept ordinance 2022-1098 as presented. Got a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Oh, excuse me. Public hearing.
Yeah. I don't think anybody signed up, but...
I don't think so either, but this is a public hearing, would anybody here like to speak in regards to ordinance 2022-1098, and it relates to the community center rental rates? Please let the minutes show that no one cared to speak, please. Now then, entertain a motion.
I re-submit my acceptance of the 2022-1098 ordinance.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance 2022-1100, again, this is a public hearing, and the final reading, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2022-1096, said ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the departmental functions of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, for the year beginning July the 1st of 2022 and ending June 30th of 2023, providing an effective date.
Mayor and Commissioners, uh, you're aware that the only reason we have this in front of you is because of the change in water and wastewater accounting that the Comptroller's requiring, and that they will not allow us to use our grants as revenue, so we had to go back and adjust our budget, it's been approved conditionally, and once this budget amendment is passed, it'll be approved, and, um, we continue to have concerns about that way of budgeting, but we'll deal with the Comptroller's Office on that, all cities do at this time, just so you know, but otherwise happy to answer any questions.
Any question?
I guess, why?
They do not want you to use grant money as revenue, so, which is not a big deal this year, we could find $200,000 easily with new, uh, TAPS, but next year, the grants for the sewer plant are gonna be in the $5 million range, and they'll be very hard for us to offset, so, um, every city is at every conference saying why they requiring this, and it's, it's really gonna be a problem, and I'm not sure how that's gonna end up, but we're gonna have this year's budget that we're in right now will be fine with what you're recording on right now, and you won't have a budget amendment in front of you again until six months in December.
And I've talked to some of the other city folks, and they're all scratching their head, what in the world just happened?
Yeah.
Because every community has to survive on grants, so this, we're not the only one I can assure you. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone here care to speak?
Somebody did.
I believe she did.
Ain't even let her talk.
Seeing no one here to speak, would you please let minutes reflect? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like a motion in favor of ordinance 2022-1100 as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C, Resolution 2022-38, and this is a public hearing, this relates to ordinance 2022-1101, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, and at this time, I would like to ask our city attorney, Cory, if she would, to get up and speak for just a moment.
Yeah, I'll come up here, and I think y'all can hear me better from this place. Um, so this is the annexation that we've been talking about for several months now. This commission is considering the annexation of approximately 115 acres along South Cross Bridges Road. This commission has the ultimate decision-making power in deciding whether to annex the property, how to serve that property, and how to zone that property. So tonight, there will be two public hearings before this commission. One, a public hearing on the annexation pursuant to the plan of services, and the second public hearing, if that one passes, if that one passes, you will have a second public hearing, um, for designating a zoning classification for that property, again, if annexed. You will not have a second public hearing if the annexation does not pass. There'll be two separate public hearings, like I said, but there'll be the same rules will apply to each public hearing, so if it's okay with the board, I'll go ahead and stake those.
Please.
Um, each member of the public who signed up to speak will have three minutes of uninterrupted time to speak at this podium. Um, if the citizens or the public would like to nominate someone else to speak for their time, we can give people up to 10 minutes, or whatever amount of time that, uh, this board chooses, instead of having 50 people speak for three minutes, we can have certain nominated people speak for longer periods of time, that's what this commission would like to do. Um, but people are, should not be allowed to speak more than once, unless someone else gives them their time. Um, the commission will not rebut public comment, so when the people are speaking, they get to speak during their time, but your job is to take their public comments into consideration during your deliberation. So, um, the public will speak first, then we'll close the public hearing, and then it will be the commission's time to deliberate amongst yourselves and make your motions and decide what to do. So again, those rules would apply to both the public hearings, but if it's okay, I'll go ahead and explain what you'd be doing in the first public hearing. But the first one is, um, before this commission in your packet is a resolution to annex the property pursuant to a plan of services that's been presented to y'all. Um, the commission must deliberate and decide whether to annex the property and incorporate that property into the city's boundaries, and also, uh, whether the plan of services for this territory that was presented to you, um, is appropriate, and whether it should be approved and adopted. So, it's one resolution that's before you, but those are the two topics that need to be discussed by this commission before you make a decision. And, as always, it's helpful if you deliberate out loud, and you will have something for the minutes, and it, um, is just helpful if we know what you're thinking, okay? So that's all I have for the first public hearing, and I'll let the mayor go ahead and open that public hearing if she's ready.
All right. Thank you, Cory. And we'll open the public hearing, uh, I have a, seven people here signed up to speak, and it would appear to me, and I'm making an assumption, and that's very dangerous, that each of these are probably here, with the exception of one maybe, to speak in regarding on the South Cross Bridges Road property, so, uh, first name we have on here is Greg Lewandowski, did I butcher that up? Okay, thank you. Please come forward, and if you don't mind, state your name and your address.
Mayor, you don't have a key card?
Please.
Yes, ma'am. Sir, I'm Greg Lewandowski, I'm the owner of 955 South Cross Bridges. The entirety of this has been debated over several months, and I'll lay this out, we've come to numerous problems. First would be schools, there are inadequate seats, and the school board has stated that there are inadequate funds to build a new school for at least one year, if not two, and that 75% of the budget is already accounted for Springfield. Traffic, um, the traffic study itself, we saw the line laid there, however, it was laid on only three days, it was moved several times, so it would not meet an actual scientific study, it was also not laid across the highway to adequately judge whether or not this road could handle up to 210 additional cars based on the zoning requirements. Water, we've asked about the hydrology of the area, we have areas that are subject to some pumps and need to be dealt with, we also don't know if it's going to flood our properties. In addition to that, this council admitted that they do not have a plan for rural water. That means that if you don't provide an adequate water supply, there are potential legal ramifications for the city as well as the council members, should somebody be injured by that or killed. Finally, revenue, these houses only bring 70 cents of every dollar required to fund them. That means that every person in this city, by annexing this, you are saying we need to raise your taxes 43%, no matter how you spread that, it's either in sales tax, property tax, or sending your police department out to collect fines as best they can. Um, finally, on the revenue side of this, this project, the property behind my home is zoned R40 under the county. This sale's contingent on the fact that the council actually annexes this and puts it as R1, otherwise, the developer has basically said they don't think it's viable. So I'm not sure whether the council wants to accept the potential liability for the city in civilly, if something should go wrong, or this is not executed properly, and potentially the criminal liability if someone's killed because we don't have water and the commission's accepted it. I'm imploring you to vote against not only rezoning this, but annexing this in, because the city can't actually say we have a viable plan to do this safely and take care of people we intend to bring in, educate their children, move their vehicles, and not create an absolute hazard to the public, as well as create impediments to the county and the state, and puts us in a bad light as a city. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert, Robert Riddenhour.
Riddenhour, Mayor. Um, I do live in the area, and I would like to allocate my minutes to Commissioner Tommy Wolford.
Okay.
And I'll speak on my behalf.
Thank you. Tommy, you're up next, if you don't mind, please come forward, state your name and your address, please.
Question before I start, sir? Since there are two commission items.
Yes, sir.
Will still be held to one speaking.
There'll be...
And I'm just asking a question, I'm not trying to fuss with you either way.
There'll be another public hearing for the zoning if this one passes, you'll get another three minutes.
You get another three minutes, and I thank you for answering that for me, ma'am.
May I just, Williver gets six minutes?
Yes, sir. Three, yes, because the gentleman...
He gets three right now, and he'll get three left.
No, the gentleman before just gave him three, his three minutes.
So he had...
This is gonna get monotonous, Mr. Chairman, but I'm gonna yield that extra three minutes to my son Jake Williver, so I'll only have three, sir. Number one, uh, good evening, and thank you for hearing me tonight. Uh, at our last meeting, and I think it was, uh, I can't remember, it's maybe three weeks ago, I circulated a petition that had the names of all of the people that live out on South Cross Bridges Road. When I say all, I'm talking about 99%, because I might have missed one. Have all of you all seen that petition?
No, sir, I haven't.
The one you passed out that day?
I gave it to you, ma'am, I'm sorry.
No, it went, it sat there on all of your, uh, in front of you, and then it was put in the minutes with the...
You'd have to go back to the video and show it to me.
It was right here.
I'm, I'm just asking a question, simply, uh, if, if that happened, uh, I, I would appreciate it if every one of you did get to see that petition.
You handed it to them, and you all accepted it, and then it was put with, in Teresa's files.
But you didn't see it.
It was in front of them.
These are some thoughts that I had before I came here this evening, and I'd like you to consider. Number one, three planning commissions, uh, have previously emphatically declined to approve this project. One of them was some 10 to 12 years ago with a regional planning commission, two of them were earlier in the summer by your planning commission, and they defeated this emphatically. Now, I think the vote was four to zero each time, and I am not certain on the second time whether it was four to one or four to zero, but I know it was four. What is the procedure, and this is just a thought now, I'm not asking you to answer a question, what is the procedure for selecting people to serve on the planning commission? Who votes on them? Are these people who should have a knowledge of development projects, infrastructure, roads, and water? Does the selection process include people who have this knowledge, or do we simply go through the phone book, pick out five names, and say, "You're it"? Why are we constantly invited to planning commission meetings that have absolutely no meaning to the city of Mount Pleasant? Are they simply a waste of everybody's time? If they are, send them home or use them. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, next we have Jake Williver.
Six minutes, sir.
If you don't mind, Jake, state your name and your address.
My name is Jake Williver, I live at 998 South Cross Bridges Road, Mount Pleasant. Um, good evening, I should be thanking you, I've, I've got all South Cross Bridge Road represented here tonight, folks I haven't seen in a long time, so, uh, at least if I have to find something good about being here tonight, I'll look at that. But I will say this, I, I know something they don't know, I was here when you had your work session, and, and I know that you've already made up your mind as to what's gonna happen tonight. I was able to, to watch all the department heads come up and, and see their presentations, uh, before they started, they were asked to be brief, they were asked to come up, but, but to keep it short, because decisions have already been made, is, is the assumption that I draw. Um, so, what I'd like to do here tonight, in the, in the few minutes that I've got to talk to you tonight, is to talk to you a little bit about the question that you should have asked. Um, I, I went ahead and, a few weeks ago, filed a records request for the city of Mount Pleasant. I paid $325 to get two thumb drives worth of information about the things that really should have already been circulating to you, but evidently some were not. So, in light of that, let me go through and ask, or, uh, or maybe just enlighten you just a bit about some of the questions that you should have asked about these plan of services, and, and let you take that into account. Uh, I'm not stating this as a threat, I'm stating this as a point of fact, if this passes tonight, I'm gonna file a lawsuit challenge. Again, that's not to tell you anything other than, as I stand here tonight, in the six minutes or so that I'm allotted, this won't be the end of it, because you are cramming something down the throat to the citizens of South Cross Bridges Road, many of which are here tonight, and, and that's not gonna fly, and, and we're gonna do what we can do to, to slow it down or stop. So, with that being said, uh, I'm looking at your plan of services, uh, first and foremost, I noticed that it's nine pages long, uh, five of those pages are devoted to the legal description for the property that you're dealing with, so the legal description is longer than the services that you're stating that you're gonna provide, and, and let's be clear on that, this is a plan of services, you are committing to Mr. Johnson or Mr. Johnson's developer that this is what you're gonna provide, and I'll come back to that a little bit. Uh, police, the question you should have asked is, with the one to two officers that we're gonna have on shift, what happens if somebody calls in sick, and there's an issue out on South Cross Bridges Road in the property that you guys have annexed? I, I think that's a legitimate question, what I got sitting back in the audience there is that, well, maybe the sheriff will answer that call. Uh, it seems like also we may get some free one, so maybe there's something that we're gonna get out of that. Uh, hopefully the sheriff will be available to answer the call if, if, uh, maybe one of our officers on shift has called in sick that night. I'm gonna move on to fire, you're gonna provide fire services. Basically, I got two sentences that says we'll provide fire services based on whatever we said we would provide the citizens of Mount Pleasant. The questions you should have asked, how is that gonna affect our ISO rating? Is that gonna make the insurance rate to the citizens of Mount Pleasant, is that gonna go up? Um, what kind of fire flow are we going to have available with the water at our disposal? Are we gonna have the 10 to 15% excess capacity that ISO recommends to be able to put out fires in that neighborhood? Are we gonna be penalized by the fact that it's more than 2.5 miles from the station that we have, or the station that we may have down the road, uh, given the fact that ISO recommends only 2.5 miles? Are we gonna have to provide additional equipment when all these 700 to 800 homes that we got proposed come online? What's, who gonna pay for that? Are the citizens of Mount Pleasant gonna pay for that, or, or are we gonna go out to get grants, or how's that gonna take place? Probably the most interesting comes up next, in, in water, I, as part of the request, I received the grant that you guys made to the Murray County Commission, asking for a percentage of the ARC funds, and I'm gonna read a little bit, it talks about your issues with water, and I'm, I'm quoting here, it says, "Unless the issue is addressed, the city will very soon be unable to provide adequate water supply to existing customers, as well as being unable to facilitate future growth and development within the community." Going on down, "Mount Pleasant cannot afford to lose existing industries or turn potential industries away due to lack of water." When I came to City Hall to pay for my records request, I, I see this nice flyer that says, "Don't anybody worry, we've got plenty of water available to us, we're in good shape." This resolution was done in June of this year, we're looking at three months ago, folks, what has changed in three months? Going on into the resolution, I noticed that you pump 1.2 million gallons per day, when you multiply that times 365, 438 million gallons per year. Just looking at your loss rate, what you pump, and then what you can't account for as it comes down the line, after it's treated, 226 million 87, 226.87 million gallons per year. I got my math education in Mount Pleasant, I'm assuming it's correct, but that works out to be about a 51% loss rate. So, these funds that you requested by resolution, telling the county that you didn't have enough water to serve your existing customers...
Six minutes is up.
Six minutes is up, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have John Williver.
I'm Mr. John Williver's, uh, legal counsel, he's shy, doesn't wanna talk tonight, so he's, he might get hurt.
That'll be fine, thank you.
I'm starting it now, but I think...
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
There you go.
So your solution to the county, in getting this million dollars, or whatever you got, we wanna get more sources, so your solution to that is, we've got a bad leak, our, for our fix is, we're gonna pump more water into it. If you pump more water into it, you're gonna lose more, folks. I'm, I'm not here to fuss at you, I'm here to point out the fact, you need to get your house in order before you come mess up ours, okay? That's all I'm asking. Take some time on this. Moving on, and, and I will point out, your plan of services states that you'll provide water, pool water availability, what does that mean, folks? You're telling this developer, he can build his 160 houses, but oh, by the way, if we don't have enough water, we're gonna turn it off, and you're gonna be, you're gonna be out of luck. I don't understand what kind of plan of services that is, I've never seen that before. Moving on down, in the limited amount of time that I have left, um, the gentleman earlier referred to South Cross Bridges Road, 160 new houses that come online, uh, I had to stop on the way over here to get out of the way of a load around, but there's no shoulder on that road, the road's in bad shape. When you put that much additional capacity, do not be led to believe that the developer's gonna have to fix that road, ain't the way it works, folks, that ain't the way it works. And finally, you have inspections and codes, when I did my records request, I found out that you've got one and a half employees that works in your inspection and codes, that's gonna be out monitoring all this new development that you got. And then schools, finally, I, I told you earlier, I'm the, uh, attorney for the Murray County Board of Education, there's no new Mount Pleasant school in the works, when you fill up the 50 odd seats that are out there, you're gonna be looking at portable classrooms. I don't have a child that's gonna be using those classrooms, but if I was an existing Mount Pleasant citizen, I'd be mad. You understand I'm mad, I didn't bring this to you, you brought this to us, so do with it as you please, but just know this will not end the, uh, conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Shaw Daniels, if you don't mind, state your name and your address, please.
Shaw Daniels, I live at 845 South Cross Bridges Road, uh, with, with what I've been said so far, I mean, I, I don't know if there's anything that could be added to the, to the fact that, that it shouldn't be, uh, approved tonight, but, but when I was here at the planning commission, in, in that group, and we got to speak then, one of the questions that I had was, we don't have any information on exactly how many homes are gonna be built there, I know the zoning was considered and what they were talking about, but I, I raised the question that night, are we talking about one home per acre, which kind of matches what the other, uh, families have built up and around the front, or are we looking at three homes per acre? Nobody offered that question, well, if you go from one per acre to three per acre, we're not talking about a, a hundred or so homes, we're talking closer to three, 300 or so homes, which, which accompanied with the other piece of property that's being considered across the bypass, we're looking at a large number of homes being... of homes being built in a short amount of time, and I just don't know how we're going to keep up with it. So part of my concern was with those people, and I've got property that's adjacent to this one, so I've got a vested interest in it too, is that if you put that many homes on that small of a tract, it's going to bring down the property value to those homes up at the front, which they have invested thousands of dollars in, and they got some awful nice homes up there. If you're going to take and cram pack a bunch of new homes in behind it, it'll bring their values down. And I'm pretty sure that's what will happen with the property that I have adjacent. I also have property just on the other side of it, and it'll do the same thing down there. Trying to come up out of that road to get back into the town off a nasty road, it's going to be impossible at times, just because of the sheer number of vehicles coming in and out of this area down there. So unless we're planning on widening the road and doing some infrastructure improvements, water, and having the sewer lines and all that stuff installed to accommodate all of these new homes and stuff, I think we're making a major mistake, just by moving so fast with what we're looking at with both of these pieces of property being considered. And it would be my request to defer this to a later date, once we have a better chance to understand what exactly is being provided, and what improvements are going to be made, before we take and give the approval for all of this development to start. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaw. Next, we have Beverly Evans.
Beverly Evans. I'm here on behalf of my daughter Jessica, who does have a house in South Cross Bridges Road and couldn't be here tonight. But I'm going to tell you that she feels like everyone else, that she just built it. She invested her money, teacher. That's a big deal to invest your money. But I'm going to tell you something, and I'm telling you this from a mother's perspective. I love this area. She loved this area because it was safe. It was Mount Pleasant. Y'all are kind people, sweet people. It's not about so much all the problems, because there's going to be a lot of them, and I agree with everything that's been said, and so does my daughter. But here's the thing, I've been coming out of South Cross Bridges the last few weeks, and you come out during certain times, and you can't get across. And there's a line that's already formed behind you, okay? And if you're a timid driver, and no offense to me, if you're going to have high schoolers, or going to be timid drivers, trying to pull out and get into those little, and go across to, and get in this little short lane, and make a U-turn, and come back and try to watch the traffic coming that way. If y'all have ever tried that during these times, it's scary. It really is. And so I was thrilled my daughter got this place because it was a safe place, had good neighbors, good people. And it meant something to me as a mother. Now, let me tell you what I'm telling you my concern is. That traffic, there's going to be accidents. People are going to get impatient. Kids are going to get impatient. It needs to not be that we have so many people and so many new houses, that this becomes an accident waiting to happen. And I'm going to go one step further. Where I live, they had this come up a few years back, and they put 80 houses next to me, and I live in the country, just like South Cross Bridges, all to myself, very nice. The kids are playing in the street. The police have already been called. Eighty houses are up. Three houses put on one little acre. They're right next to each other. There's no place for the kids to play. It's literally kids playing in the street in front of my house, and it scares me to death because people fly through there. I'm just trying to say, please, please consider this. Give this more time. At least give it some consideration that this doesn't have to happen today. It just doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all of the citizens' comments from the time being. What we're going to do here is, I'd like to start with Ms. Granberry. Anything you'd like to, as from Corey's instructions, anything you'd like to say?
First of all, I appreciate everybody commenting. But the fact that everything that was said today, it's really not true, no matter how the break goes, because we provide water out there now. If there's a fire, we're going. If there's an emergency call, our police are going, no matter what time of night it is, and they do respond. And we do have good police officers. If somebody called in sick, they're going to be replaced because that's our policy. And the next thing of it is, the road out there is not that wide. I'll go along with that. But hey, that's county. And nobody went to the county and said nothing about the shoulder falling off the road, anything like that. And as well as our schools, I'm tired of Mount Pleasant being there. Our school should have been redone a long time ago. We pay taxes too. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Granberry. Mr. Davis?
All right. I'm going to say some things, and Corey, you may have to say, well, that's another stop. First of all, Jake, I did bring up the butt of water. I brought it up. And then I was told, two months later, we've got the water. Who am I to say where this water came from? I don't know. I have to go by, whether it's right or wrong, I have to go by what my manager says. She says, Mike, the water's there. I have my doubts. I'll say that. I mean, when you get so many homes that we're talking about, I couldn't say that it's going to be there. And Shaw, when you said, you know, nobody's brought up about how many homes it was brought up, I asked, after the meeting was over with, or before we dismissed, I perfectly asked Jay, you know, how many homes, you know, would he go to one home per acre? He said, no, he cannot do it. And what gets me about all of this, we have a planning commission, and we give them the direction of what to do. Me personally, there are some things that's happened I may not like, but that's what they said, and I said, okay, I'm going to go with it. And I think it's a shame that we, as a board of commissioners, has denied those people of what they said. I just think it's wrong. We went through this once before, several years ago. And guess what? The city commissioners took over from the planning commission. And I'm telling you, guys, it is wrong. And I'm going to say something else. I didn't do this. But we've raised our taxes here in Mount Pleasant, 41 cents, knowing all along Murray County government was going to raise theirs. Now, that has put us in way up here. Jay's not here tonight, but do you know, the people that's going to build homes out there, they are going to be, do you know, first of all, can you tell me what price of the homes would be?
Jay has not told me that.
Okay, let's just say $400,000. At least that. Okay. Mount Pleasant people are going to face $1,690. City taxes. Think about this. Columbia did not raise their taxes. Their taxes is only going to be $825. So you tell me, if I'm looking for a house, and I hate to say this, this is my city. This is my town. If I'm looking for a home, am I going to just go ahead and say, close to $1,000 bucks? It ain't nothing. Let me go ahead and pay that. I don't think so. I think if these people truly know what the cost is, they're going to look somewhere else. And I don't know how, and we as a city are supposed to be transparent. We're supposed to let people know. And I'm telling you, it's not right for these people to come in here knowing what they're going to have to pay for taxes. And besides that, Mount Pleasant's water and sewer is what, number three in the state?
Water's not.
Sewer, well, let's go with sewer. Excuse me on that part. But the water and the sewer goes together. And I'm telling you, people, we've got so much going on in this little town with all these homes and everything. And you have to take in consideration, I guess even like townhomes. If you've got townhomes, you may have 30 compared to five homes. So look how much more water is going to be taken going to those. I think we're doing our citizens of Mount Pleasant wrong, and I think we're doing the citizens of Cross Bridges wrong. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Ms. Aldous? And y'all will have to excuse Ms. Willie, her voice is about...
I have to agree with Ms. Granberry on what she said. We had engineers to come in here and do all the studies as far as what we could supply up there. No one from the city limits of Mount Pleasant has called me against it. They haven't said they didn't want it. And I got to speak for what I think is here for Mount Pleasant. We're going to have to grow in order for us to have restaurants and nice stuff here. We can't keep saying, no, no, no. And if we don't do the property out there, well, Columbia going to come in and do what they want to do. They could put a cow pasture back there. Y'all still wouldn't be happy. So I'm going to go with Ms. Granberry, what she said, and when y'all said that we didn't do those studies or whatever, that has been done. I don't believe our city commissioner, I mean, our city manager will put us in a bind, nor our attorney. So that's my thought.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey?
Sometimes, things look good on paper. But then, when it comes down to the people, that looks good on paper, how it affects their daily lives. And when you look at it from, you know, empathy, you know, as a teacher, I'm always trying to view things with empathy, because not everybody comes from the same place I do, right? So it's my job, I feel like as a commissioner, to see that point of view. I may not agree with everything, but I have to look at it with empathy, from your eyes. And I get it. I really do. Some of my things are, you know, I ran, when I ran, this last time I ran, for, you know, because I've been here 21 years, you know, and it took a while for y'all to accept me, but you did. And I love it here. And when I ran, I ran on the platform of, I want to do for the future of Mount Pleasant. And again, when something looks good on paper, it may not look as good when you're dealing with the people. I bring up the planning commission. You know, at least two times, you know, in recent years, they have denied this plan. But my question is, why do we have a planning commission? Because, and no offense to you, Mr. Marshall, but a dear friend of mine pastors a church on South Cross Bridges, Tim Paul, and he signed this petition. But the planning commission made him go through all the steps that he had to do. They wound up having to pave on top of the paving that they'd already done. But if we're going to make them follow the planning commission's orders, and we're not going to follow what the planning commission recommends, why do we have a planning commission? I'm for our great as a city. But I feel like for the future of Mount Pleasant, I feel like we've got to be smart about this. So I can't go along with it, Shaw.
That's all there?
That's it.
All right.
Ms. White, can I say something before you start?
Why, sir?
I've heard the planning commission, they throw it under the bus quite a bit. And I'm one of the people on the planning commission, not by choice, because I was put there. I have worked hard there for almost a year, every two weeks. I gave up my time, along with everybody else that was on the planning commission at that time, to redo the code book. We put signs everywhere. I called people and told them codes was changing. Not a single person in here complaining. Came to now one of the public hearing meetings, we were redoing the code book. Because at that time, you could have had that code, just like the one that the county had. But nobody come in here on that. But then today, they want to come in and throw the planning commission under the bus? And I don't appreciate it. Because we do work, and we do work hard.
Yes, sir.
I'm through.
Jacqueline, I did not throw you under the bus.
I'm going to stop talking to you.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, we don't give our, and every planning commissioner doesn't agree. And I understand that. But it's the majority, just like everything else, the majority rules. But I don't ever want you to think, you know, that me personally has thrown you up under the bus on the planning commission. Because I'm not going to do that.
And just to reference, I wasn't throwing y'all under the bus at all. I was just saying, if we don't follow what y'all recommend, why do we have a planning commission? Maybe I didn't just speak to that.
No, it wasn't neither one of y'all's sayings. That's my point. They don't know what the planning commission recommended. Do they want to be up here throwing the planning commission under the bus?
All right.
Mayor may have one more point. We've sat in here before when things have come up about lawsuits. Now, here's Jake coming up and says, y'all going to have a lawsuit. Everybody here, what happens? Y'all, we can't win this lawsuit. We can't win it. And I think that's going to be a shame if this right here goes to a lawsuit, and the citizens of Mount Pleasant have to pay for it.
All right. Anybody else?
One of the statements from Corey?
Yep.
Okay. So if this passes, and there's a lawsuit, are we following, I mean, we're protected under, what is it, the MTA, like we're doing for the city, so?
So anybody can file a lawsuit?
Right.
My opinion is that we have followed the procedure, that's the state law. We have followed the procedure. We have overnoticed this. I believe we followed the requirements for annexation. As long as you're following the annexation requirement, then, you know, I think that you're covered. I'm not sure if that's what your question is. I don't know what... I don't know what, I don't know what this lawsuit is. I don't, I can't tell you that you're win or lose.
Right.
I just, we have followed the state statute.
I just don't wanna be negligent, you know, and then.
For me?
That, that, that good?
Thank you.
I'm just saying, I've been here. Been here, done that. Here to say, I've got you back. I've got you back. Y'all walks through the door. Guess what? It comes out of your pocket. You have to turn around and get your own lawyer if you don't care. I know, I know.
Okay, anything else?
I'll take my two or three minutes. I feel like that this commission has done everything that Corey said. I feel like we are, have done everything within the powers and been allowed under the law to do this. I have said it before and I will say it again, I appreciate what the planning commission does. This commission may not always agree with what the planning commission says, but that's the reason why you have both. And there's a very good reason for that. Uh, if we always all agree, then we got a problem. Uh, I've said that about this group, that if we all agree on everything, we're probably really not doing our jobs. And so, uh, I feel very comfortable that Corey has led us down the correct road with this. And I'm comfortable with that. Uh, this commission may at times do things that doesn't satisfy everyone. Uh, but I do know that what I hear from the largest portion of this community is that they wanna see new amenities. And without additional tax dollars, we will never have it. It's not possible on the current tax structure that we have. I'm not saying I wanna see another fifteen hundred homes in this town. I've had this conversation with a number of people in this community, that if we had another seven hundred homes, that's gonna create about twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-three hundred additional people. That's gonna put us at about seventy-five hundred. And I feel very comfortable with the infrastructure that we got in place, that we can cover that without any doubt. I feel like we're looking at this as a commission for the betterment of this community. And each person up here has their own ability to make their decisions, and that's what's good about this, the way it works.
That's right.
And that's why I feel like we need to at least look at this and consider, now how it follows is how it follows. It is what it is. So that's all I've got to say. Kate, have you got anything you need to add to this?
Uh, no, just, uh, that this has been something that has been recommended by our, our professional planners that we pay to give us advice on moving forward, and that, that was an affirmative, um, recommendation. And again, Corey and I have done everything that we can to research this process since it's new to both of us and, um, feel confident with Plan of Services, confident with, with what I've recommended to you. I've used the engineers to assist me because that, I'm not an expert in any of these things in any way, shape or form. So I get help wherever I can. And I'm comfortable with the recommendation that has come from staff and from our professional planners.
Okay, thank you. All right, with everything said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to not recommend Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight that relates to Ordnance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh one on the annexation on Cross Bridges Road.
We have a motion to deny? Second. All those in favor? Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Ms. Alderson?
No.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes.
Motion does not pass.
Did you say not?
His motion to not move, not pass.
That's correct.
Yes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for approval, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
You also, you can make a motion to approve. You also don't have to make this decision today. That is the option, if you want, if you want that.
Make a motion to annex Cross Bridges Road.
To approve.
Resolution.
President Resolution annex twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight.
We have a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight. Do we have a second? I'll second him. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes, because amendment is in agreement with the land plan and use in the area.
Davis?
No, because the property out there is applicable. There's nothing to do with residential property.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Alderson?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
No, because I feel like we could pause on this.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Ordnance twenty twenty-two dash eleven oh one. Paper out here. And, uh, this one as well is a public, oh, we've already gone through the public hearing on the other one. All right, Corey, would you like to speak on this?
You need to give the same rules again, if it's a separate.
Yeah. And then let me finish reading this while you move forward. An ordinance to amend Title fourteen, zoning and land use control, Chapter two, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, to zone property being annexed by Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty-eight located on off South Cross Bridges Road in Tax Map one twenty-seven, parcel oh two oh point zero zero to R one low density residential.
As I stated, this is another, a separate public hearing. This public hearing is about zoning the property that was just annexed by the past resolution. Your zoning ordinance states that anytime you annex a property, you need to simultaneously zone it. Um, as you know, this initially came before you on first reading as a recommendation or a request for R two zoning. After hearing input from this commission and the planning commission and the public, uh, the applicant revised their application to R one zoning. Okay, that recommendation or that request went back before the planning commission this week. They had another public hearing on that. The planning commission did not recommend R one zoning because they did not recommend annexation at all. Uh, R one zoning is the lowest, um, density zoning, residential zoning that you have in Mount Pleasant. Um, so what you're doing today is deciding whether that is the appropriate zoning for the property that has just been annexed. And again, the same, uh, rules for the public hearing apply. I think everyone should get to speak again if they've signed up.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks again, Corey. All right, sign in sheet again. Number one, Greg Lee Wondowski. And you know, we, we know who you are.
I, I really wanna thank you for speaking your minds and openly saying this. It was absolutely insightful. Because the gamut ran from dismissive to understanding, but the one thing that surprised me with all of this was fifty-one percent of the water we pump is lost. We don't know where it goes. That means that if someone dies out because there was not adequate water supply, and we have a roll call vote, you are the proximate cause for that death. That is criminal negligence. That is what we have here. If I would have done that as an officer in the army, I would have been relieved and court martialed. And I'm honestly just surprised by the dismissive nature of the council here. I, I do appreciate the honesty. The R one zoning can't even make it appropriate. At R one zoning, we've heard one forty to one hundred and sixty houses. Two hundred and ten cars on the road. Well, nobody asked the county. The city is now making themselves the proximate cause of the issue the county can dismiss you. Someone dies, you're the proximate cause. Water's not provided, you're the proximate cause. This is bad for the city, and we don't have a Plan of Services that says we're going to address that level of loss. I've worked on federal regulations, both here and internationally, and I have never been allowed to, to lose that much water. And I purified it for a living. If I did not account for every drop of my three thousand gallons an hour purification from every one of my machines, I was on the line for that. Because we didn't know if it came out chemicals, we didn't know if it's harming someone. And the city council just dismissed it. I'm, I'm honestly astonished by the fact that this is the accountability that I can expect from people who are elected to lead. The zoning, I'm sorry, I was not here to attend that. I wasn't in the area when it was done, and I apologize. I just moved here. But the fact of the matter that the builder is saying this isn't economically viable at the same side that the county approved this and based their Plan of Services on, tells you that they're now using you as their tool to get by what was approved for this property. And it does make you accountable for it. And I can pass on authority as a leader. I can't pass on responsibility and accountability. And I want the council to understand that. You can pass on your authority, you can delegate to your department. You cannot pass on your accountability. You'll be held accountable for the decisions you've made.
Thank you. Robert Rednauer?
My name's Robert Rednauer. I live right outside of Cross Bridges, uh, Massey Road. And everybody wants to talk about the infrastructure. Everybody's talking about roads. Let's talk about the people. Has anybody been to Spring Hill lately? When do you stop? We are now subdivision after subdivision. I work in concrete. We drive through subdivisions to get to new subdivisions to build the subdivisions. Where do we stop? You wanna annex it. Now you are talking to us because now we are your people. You wanna put us into it. Now, listen to us as your people. We're on the football field. How many of the parents do you know? We got two members of this. Wh, when does it go? When you bring all these people in here, you're not gonna know who's in the stands. You're not gonna be able to have the friendly conversations. You're not gonna know who your neighbors are anymore. That's why I moved to Mount Pleasant from Columbia. If I wanted to live in Spring Hill, I would live in Spring Hill. Keep the small town feel here. You can't do that if you bring in much people. Our police department, we have great police officers. A lot of them I consider dear friends of mine. But look at their workload. You're gonna have to bring in new police officers. That's bringing outsiders in. When do we stop? That's what my question is to you. When do you stop? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Apologies, Chairman. I don't believe I said where I live. I'm on nine ninety-eight South Cross Bridges Road. I'm gonna yield two minutes of my time to Jake Wolf, if that's appropriate, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, only thing I want to say is those things that I mentioned here earlier this evening, they were questions. Now, I didn't ask you for answers, but those were questions. And I assure you, at the next venue that you go to on this particular issue, there will be somebody asking you these questions, so you better prepare your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jake Wolf?
Second time through, I'm gonna be briefer. Uh, Ms. Alderson, I'm gonna talk to you right now, if, if you don't mind. I'm gonna address this to you. So you made a motion, the city has now voted to, to annex this, this property. You've reached beyond the city limits to get a, a bubble of property that's not connected to anything else in the Mount Pleasant city limits. Ms. Granberry was upset that people didn't, from, I guess, South Cross Bridges Road, didn't come to the, the meetings where your zoning classifications were discussed. Respectfully, we don't live in the city of Mount Pleasant. You're bringing the city to us now, so now it impacts us. So here we are. R one zoning, three houses per acre, that's, that's a hundred and sixty houses i- in this farm that, that's set behind one acre lot houses that the city of Mount Pleasant classified ten years ago. So if this passes at R one, we're, you're going to bring a new city to us and put it in our backyard of a hundred and sixty houses and all the problems that, that go with that. You were here at the study session the other night. Mr. Davis asked good questions. One of those questions was, what is spot zoning? And, and you heard the response. You, you heard the, the vitriol that that elicited from other city council members. Oh, it's not spot zoning. You don't know what spot zoning is. This isn't spot zoning. Ms. Alderson, when you bring in that density of a hundred and sixty houses to houses that are otherwise zoned agriculturally in the county, that is the definition of spot zoning. That's what spot zoning is. You're creating something with a density that, that does not match with that community and matches nothing else in that vicinity. I, I love to have amenities. I, I love, I love to go eat at nice places. I love to do those things. Don't put that burden on us, Ms. Alderson. Don't, don't do that to us. We, we live where we live for a reason. Maybe we don't like the city life. You're imposing the city life on us if you do this R one zoning. The other night, Mr. Jose was here. He said that he had already started the pro, the, this process with the county. He was going through the county, he'd be one house per acre. When he was asked, can you feasibly make this work at one house per acre, now he says no. I, I assert to you, Ms. Alderson, there are eleven houses out there that, that show him differently. All those developers and everybody who built on those front eleven acres on one house for one acre, guarantee you the folks that built those houses made money. Mr. Jose wants to make a big pile of money. Apparently, I, I'm, I'm for capitalism, but not at the expense of this community. You're changing what South Cross Bridges is. You're reaching beyond the city limits, and you're making a new city limit. And now you're putting a hundred and sixty houses on what was a row crop field. I don't know what else to say other than, please, don't, don't do that to us. There, there's no reason to do that to us. Put the brakes on, go back at one house per acre. It's a hundred and fifteen acres. At worst, you get seventy houses. You win, he wins. He makes money. You get the rooftops that Mayor White wants to, to pay for the sewer, the water, whatever you wanna pay for at forty cents higher on the tax rate. If, if that's what you want, and, and you, you certainly believe that this is a good idea for the city of Mount Pleasant, hold into one house per acre and, and make this at least a, a reasonable development that's in line with what the city of Mount Pleasant has already imposed on these other lot. Thank you.
Thank you. John Wolf?
I think Mr. Wolf is time.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. John?
I guess I got a couple more questions. Since, since we're talking about annexing down the road to get to this property, how, how wide of a strip are we talking about taking? Because if we take much of that wider than the road, it's gonna start annexing part of my property. And I don't know if that's part of the plan or not, or is it going across the road to the people who are, who are across the street from me? And then what I had seen on the drawings that I had seen is that we're only taking the first entrance into the subdivision, so we're only gonna have one entrance that would be in the city limits and not going around and taking the other entrance into this subdivision as being part of it with the, uh, with it being a hundred and fifteen acres. And, and, and I don't know, maybe we are going two or three houses per acre. There's a power line that runs across that piece of property too. There's a number of blue line strings that are there too. So I don't know how, how those are being impacted or how they'll, uh, limit the number of homes and stuff that'll be in there. But I, I think there's still a lot of questions that haven't been answered. but I think there's still a lot of questions that haven't been answered that we're moving. At the speed we're moving, we're going to cause some problems down the road that it's going to take some time and money to figure out. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Beverly Edie?
Mr. White, we appreciate you understanding something for me. That property that my daughter bought, it was bought under the assumption it was a phase one to a phase two behind him. Phase one and phase two were all part of Perry's place. If you go back to the original documents, it has been told in the past on the planning commission that that was an understanding, it would be at least a minimum of one acre lots, one house, 1,800 square feet, brick houses, nice houses, nice homes, so it'd be a nice community. That was the understanding, Mr. White. I hope you understand, and I hope you all understand, that when you start bringing in a subdivision like the one that got put in next to me, it actually deteriorates. Nice houses, nice areas, it does not make it go up in value, it will make it go down in value. So I hope you will consider the fact that they had to follow those stipulations on phase one, phase two ought to have the same stipulations, which is one house per one acre minimum. That's what's phase one. That should be, and that was supposed to be phase two, that's what everybody, including my daughter, was told was going to be, and now this is all changed. And that doesn't seem fair for the benefit of just a couple of people. And I know you're looking out for Mount Pleasant and the taxes, and I'll be honest with you, you're going to lose, I think you're going to find out, you're going to lose more money than you're going to gain with problems. So I really hope you'll at least make it one acre, one house per acre. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we've had each one of the individuals that have signed up to speak. Ms. Granberry, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
I just like everything to be noted, that what I said earlier on C goes along with D, because I do not think it is right. It's not right. It's just like they say, you know, we are shoving it down the throats of the people out there on South Cross Bridges Road. If any of y'all got a pen, write this down, the dollars and cents of annexation. Write it down and go read it. Go read it. Sugar coat it and see what it says. Because that's what it is. It's sugar coated and it turns sour. And take, I guess, on the streetlights, and you said the people out there without streetlights, are you talking about running the streetlights all the way around the curve where Massie is? Or are you just talking about right there at the first entrance that you go into?
When I read that on the study session, I was reading what Mr. Kerski prepared, and that the streetlights would be done in the neighborhood as they are done here in the city and typically...
So you're telling me then, the citizens of Mount Pleasant, and I don't mean this in no respect to anybody out there across Bridges Road, okay? I don't mean this, not bad. But you're telling me that the citizens of Mount Pleasant are going to pay for streetlights out on South Cross Bridges Road?
No, they'll pay for the, the citizens will pay for the streetlights that are on the part of the road that's annexed only.
And the part that's being annexed goes all the way around the curve, correct? Isn't that correct?
As Mr. Shaw said, there's a whole lot of stuff that needs to be brought back to the planning commission. All you're determining right now is whether the land use is appropriate.
Why have we even done C? And now you're saying, hey, let's fold up here, let's go back. I think that's what we need to do. I think we do need to go back. That's it.
Nothing missed, Alderson? Mr. Harvey?
Just to further clarify, I hope I didn't offend anybody on the planning commission with what I said, Mr. Marshall, Ms. Granberry, because my thoughts are, you know, when you're dealing with church, you're dealing with spiritual things, which are a lot more, you know, have eternal value. And, you know, if we're going to listen, then, on things that are that important, we also need to listen to our planning commission when they recommend stuff that is important, but it doesn't carry the eternal value that some of the other stuff, like at the church. So, I just wanted to clarify that, and, you know, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. I appreciate the work that all of our planning commission does, because it's often a thankless job.
Thank you.
Is there any way, before we dismiss from here tonight, you can ask Jay about the one house per acre? That's out of the question.
Not tonight.
You know, and again, I think this is a shame. You've got people out on South Cross Bridges Road that is ready to meet you, and you tell them, no. I'm sorry.
All right. I think I've said my piece as well, I just believe that if we don't start, and these are nice homes, very nice homes, I know the product that this particular folks build, and it is a nice product. I've seen it in other communities. So, I'll leave it at that. So with that...
Mayor White...
It is a public hearing, that's what I'm getting...
What you're voting on today is whether or not R1 zoning is appropriate for this property.
That's correct. That's all we're voting on.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Make a motion, ordinance 2022-1101, that this property not be annexed.
It's already annexed.
It's already annexed.
All right. It says right here, ordinance to men title 14, zoning and land, plan use control, chapter two, zoning ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, zone property being annexed by resolution 2022-38, located off South Cross Bridges Road, a text map 127, partial 020.00 to R1, low density resident.
Yes, sir, we've already approved that.
I think, Mr. Davis, what you're requesting is to overturn number, letter C.
Yes.
Because the property was annexed by C already.
Property's already been annexed.
All right, what's this?
We're voting over to approve it as an R1.
Okay, here it is, right here, the one I've got right here that I'm reading, that's what I'm going by.
That's correct.
So it seems like, we may not know what we're doing, Jake, but I'm going, we just had C, resolution 2022-38. Okay, we went through that, now we're on D.
Right.
That's correct.
If you had not passed C as a commission, you would have not had the jurisdiction to hear D.
D.
But because you did pass C, because this commission passed C, the next question is, how do you zone that property that was already annexed?
And the law requires you to do the two things together.
That is correct.
Mayor, this is your show, you go.
Again, we have had the public hearing. This is a final reading, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we do not zone it, it's R1. And my reason for that is, it's because that it's not in agreements with the other land and the houses out there. But, I want to make it quite clear, it's not agricultural land either. And the people that says it is, Mr. Wolf could have told them, it could have had a wheel made up, and it would have stayed there forever. So, I'm not in agreeance with changing it to this R1. Now, if you want to come to the scoreboard, talk about something else, then we'll do that, but I make a motion we don't pass it to R1.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Can you explain your motion? So you're...
I'm not in agreeance with the size of the lots and the houses, no.
So you're recommending that we don't zone it to R1?
No.
So then what would it be? What do we do?
The default would be R1.
The lowest density.
If the lowest density, if you're asking to go back and create a different zone...
That's what I had sliced.
Which we don't have.
That would have to go, I just said, it would have to go back to the scoreboard. They would have to come back to the scoreboard for appeal to do that.
But, just, I know we've said it, but there is currently, your zoning ordinance does not have a zone with a lower density than R1.
That's correct. That's correct.
Come to the scoreboard. It has to go to the scoreboard.
I brought that up.
We have a motion to...
Same answer, same rule, though. You can't do it tonight, but you could change the zoning ordinance if that's what you're asking to do. Right now, the motion on the floor is to not zone it R1, or to deny ordinance 2022-1101.
So, what happens if it's denied, what happens?
I will have to go back and look at that, but I can tell you right now that the default is usually the lowest density, and the lowest density is R1.
So, right, so the owner, or I guess, you know, Jay, or whoever the owner is, I can go ahead and start there.
I'm not going to answer that question right now.
And I don't want...
It's not a, thank you, Corey. Something I anticipated.
So, can I make a motion?
We've got a motion on the floor.
Can that motion be amended or whatever?
It can, yeah.
Question, so if we pass her motion? Which would say it's not zoned for R1? What happens? Where do we go from there? Does it just die in the water? Does it go to R2? Does it go to R3? Does it just sit there at R1 until we revisit this, or they reapply, or what happens?
I do not know. If it's not zoned R1 on the second reading, it either doesn't have a zone, or it gets the default zone, or somebody asks...
If you want some more time to do some research on that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
And I had rather give our attorney the opportunity to give us that answer.
Thank you. Are you asking me?
Yes, I'm fixing to ask the question. Corey, can I make a motion to amend this ordinance? To go back to the planning commission and create, I mean, somebody can come up with the answer, R1 A, or whatever they want to do, for only one house per acre.
As of right now, we have a motion to deny ordinance 2022-1101, and we are going to vote for that.
Mayor, she also said I could amend it.
We have a motion right this moment. Hold on, just a second. I get you plenty of opportunity to speak without interruption, please, sir.
Well, you're wrong.
No, I'm not. We have a motion to deny ordinance 2022-1101, is that correct, Corey?
That's the motion there.
Okay.
You're pushing this down these people's throat when it can go back and be amended, and let the commission, let the planning commission look at it.
Well, right now, it's, there's a motion, we've got to get a second.
On that motion?
I'm telling you, I have a right to amend, I would think so.
As of right now, the motion has been made to deny, but it hasn't been seconded. It has not been seconded. In quiet for a minute, it doesn't sound like, go get a second. So, your recommendation, just to clarify, Ms. Jack, is to deny zoning R1?
Yes. It's not in that agreeance with the other property.
Can we defer so that you've got time to research?
Yes. I mean, you can defer it. If you haven't voted on Ms. Granberry's motion, I think what y'all are asking to do is to, are you, there's no second on Ms. Granberry's motion. They're a new motion, are you asking, can one of you make a new motion to defer it to give the planning commission time to look at? Is that what you're asking? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, that's what I was asking, could it be amended with the planning commission?
Well, what happened is, Ms. Granberry's motion died, now you can make a new motion.
It died, nobody seconded it.
Correct, now you can make a new motion.
That's what we're trying to explain to you, it died.
Bill, I am trying to amend this.
Now, you can.
I'm trying to explain to you.
Now you can.
I'm trying to explain to you.
Now you can. You could not do that prior to that, not getting a motion.
You just got through saying it didn't pass.
That's right. Now you can make your motion.
Yes, you're exactly right. I want to make a motion to amend this. Laugh all you want to, Bill, laugh all you want to, you're the one that ran, you know, for state rep, saying I never raised taxes. You raised taxes at Mount Pleasant for three years in a row.
Let me get something straight.
Don't laugh at me.
Young man, we're here to pass this or not.
Don't be laughing at me.
I'll laugh if you want to.
Look in the mirror, then laugh.
I do every morning.
Well, good. Anyway, Corey, I'll make a motion, make sure I say this right, to amend this, that it goes back to the planning commission, and hopefully the planning commission will hear it. They may not hear it. You know, they might just say, I don't want to hear it. To make an ordinance, whatever they want to call it, where the city will have land that will require you to build on only one acre of land.
Can I try to restate what you're...
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I think you're asking for a motion to defer this ordinance for enough time for the planning commission to consider creating another zone.
Yes, ma'am.
Exactly what I was doing.
That's exactly right. I second that. We have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Sounds like it pacified. Yes, sir.
Do we have an annexed property that has no zoning?
You do right now. You sure do. Right now, you've got a piece of property that's been annexed in the city of Mount Pleasant with no zoning.
It shouldn't have never been annexed.
That's why I'm sitting here laughing.
Shouldn't have never been annexed.
All right, moving right along, I think we spent enough time on that.
I make a motion to spin the rules and go back to 5A.
So, let's see here, what we have for 5A is a proclamation for Ms. Rhonda D. Hooks, and Ms. Hooks is in the property, apparently, in the building. And if you don't mind, please come forward. And would all of y'all like to come forward with me as well, please?
Yes.
I'm fine, sir, it's me, ma'am.
All right, everybody ready? And this is a, an honor for us to do this. Whereas the citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city and, whereas Rhonda D. Hooks possesses these characteristics and is a native of Mount Pleasant, Murray County, Tennessee. Attorney Hooks has been practicing law for over 20 years in the church, criminal, and juvenile law arenas on May 9th, 2002, I've got to go back a year too. She became the first African-American female attorney admitted to the Murray County Bar of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee. She currently practices in middle and west Tennessee, and is also general counsel and chief of staff of one of the largest African-American Baptist churches in Memphis. Whereas Attorney Hooks was honored to be selected as the Columbia State Community College commencement speaker with the graduating class of 2004, and her likeness is on the wall of fame of Murray County's Brown Elementary School with others who have contributed to our community. She is the former legal liaison for Murray Men in Action, past president of the National Black Law Students Association at Thurgood Marshall, Thurgood Marshall Law School, and a member of the Phi Delta Phi Legal Fraternity, Ben Jones Bar Association, Tennessee Bar Association, and the American Bar Association. She was formerly a Murray County building and zoning planning commissioner. Attorney Hooks was an associate member of the Fraternal Order of Police, an honorary member of the American Legion Post 170, and daughter of the I B T O D W Cali Morton Temple Number 817. Whereas Attorney Hooks also has two publications, Columbia Rush Ride of 19.6, MTESU Golar Archives, and has the Electoral College Outlived in State, Thurgood Marshall, Thurgood Marshall Law Journal. She has written a handbook guide for churches entitled, The Shielded Church. Attorney Hooks is also a senior partner in church law information consultants, and she travels around the country lecturing to audience regarding bylaws. Incorporated status, Bible 1C3 status, et cetera. All the pitfalls that can occur within church and house for churches to protect themselves from unwanted litigation, turmoil, and dispute resolution. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and its mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring this outstanding individual at this time. Now, therefore, our William F. White Jr., mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do recognize and proclaim, and we backdated this to June the 19th, as it being Juneteenth, as Rhonda D. Hooks Day, and call upon all citizens of the city of Mount Pleasant, join with us in recognizing Rhonda D. Hooks for her many accomplishments. Congratulations. And you're welcome to say a few words.
And since she's my child, and she shares my birthday, and I know a Mr. Mother Day is not giving flowers, and I can give him a gift.
Thank you. Um, have y'all ever known, uh, my mom to keep a secret? When she kept one? It was, hey, something's going on tonight at the commission meeting, and I need you here at 6 o'clock. So, I might have to call. My mom got there to say, hey, any troopers, I'm going to call you to tell you, you tell them a little bit about this, I got a picture. Uh, wow, I'm, I'm floored, I did not know, uh, at all, so I appreciate each one of the commissioners. Uh, in addition to everyone that is here, uh, my church family is here, hey, pastor? And my, my other momma that's holding a phone, she's here. And, uh, my aunt is here, my nephew is here. Crazy, I didn't even know that was you. The person who taught me correct English, I love her dearly, I always talk about her. And that's, uh, watch her, true. I so, yeah, yes, yes, and so, all of you, my colleague Jake is here, um, as well, so I really appreciate this honor, it's amazing. I'll tell you that, um, growing up here in Mount Pleasant, and still here, I'm still here, I'm just kind of back and forth, um, it has been an amazing journey. Uh, when I started out, I did not intend on, and of course, you know that, so you can't say that. Never intended on being at the point that I am now. I always thought I'd be a journalist, or something to that effect, but I'm arguing with, with, uh, really, obviously, that's a whole nother story. And many of you, it's just, um, I guess destiny and God's will. So I really appreciate each of you, uh, for recognizing me, because this is such a great honor to my goddaughter, and those are all my little godkids there, uh, that were out running around. So if y'all were doing this, and heard that, they were saying, hurry up, come on, what's going on? So I apologize for them, uh, being so energetic at having something at night, they're really good. So thank you so much, uh, to you, uh, mayor, to you, Miss Vice Mayor, and to all of you. I really appreciate it, and yes, I wish a pride. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody want to get a picture?
No, no, no.
Family, you want to take pictures?
Yes, you'd like to take a picture, we'd be happy for you to do it. That one does not need to be signed. Slide that one right there.
Ma'am, hold on, look at it, they got some stragglers.
I'm a children. Thank all y'all for coming, I do appreciate you very much. Thank you, Bill. I love you. I love you too, mama. The kids, I thank you for listening. Chris, the mom, she ain't giving me no shirt. I love you too, mama.
Yes, ma'am.
Where's the screen? We're going to have to... Where, where we going?
Can't tell me.
It is. She's got a problem talking right now.
Appreciate you. Love y'all, thank you. Yes, I'm just getting...
All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with the meeting again, please, and it's a monthly report from the mayor, and I'll be real brief, I said this last Thursday night, and just how much I appreciate what all the city employees do. I was in with the power company last week and said the same thing, and, and I just appreciate everything they do. It's, they go above and beyond, so, thank you. Hey, yeah, shut the doors, please. All right, monthly financial and budget report, and we've got, Sonia here, Loretta's out for the, today, she had to be at appointment.
Uh, Loretta apologizes that she couldn't come to the meeting tonight, but she wanted me to make sure that all y'all received her reports in the email. If you've got any questions, please let us know. And then next, she wanted me to remind you that in the coming month, that we're going to have several employees out of, with training and conferences, so please be patient with us. Okay? And if you have any questions, just please let me know, okay?
Thank you, Sonia. We, uh, we need a motion to approve.
Yeah, yeah.
May I make a motion to approve the financial budget report?
Got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Got a number of seconds, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager?
The only thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, that hadn't been mentioned yet, is there's a, on October 1st, there's a Murray County Youth Aviation Summit that's happening at the airport. It's all day long, it's a free event. It's being put on by Carlson Martin, Vice Mayor Chris Martin's son, who's also a pilot. And, uh, all the proceeds go to Boys and Girls Clubs of South Central Tennessee, but there, there is information on it, and we'll post it here, but just want to make sure everybody's aware of it, that, um, it's noon to 3:00 on October 1st. Trying to encourage you to...
I thought it was earlier.
Thanks, wow.
Um, on my little paper, I see the end of an N, and that's it. So we'll have it posted with the correct time, but it's, it's most, it's most of the day.
Because I know they're doing some kind of lunch thing with it.
That could be in AM, Mayor, that I've, I've not read that right, but it is most of the day. And it is a free event, and, um, we'll make sure that it, it, it has a Facebook site and everything like that. It's mcaviationsummit@gmail.com.
But they are going to have, uh, food trucks and things, I'd have to raise money. The money will go to...
It says flight simulations, building airplanes, face painting, light lunch.
Yeah, there's lots of things going on. Going to try to find it, I've got the email.
Mayor, I think it's probably 10:00 to 3:00.
I think it is, for some reason.
10:00 AM to 3:00.
9:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Yeah, I knew, sorry, it's early, I couldn't...
Yeah.
All right. Okay, uh, special reports, race water.
Uh, the only thing to add, as you know, all of our projects are moving forward relatively quickly now with sewer, and we've been frustrated with getting approval to, um, bid out Rainy Street, and we were told by USDA via email that we'd have an answer this Friday.
Good.
So hopefully next month, I can report that to you.
Good, good, good. Mount Pleasant Gas?
Uh, no report on that, everything is fine there.
All right, going into new business ordinance 2022-1102. This is the first reading, an ordinance amending Title 14 Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, Zoning Ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the municipal zoning map incorporated therein by rezoning, rezoning a portion of property from highway commercial to high-density residential R3, and another portion of the property from highway commercial to medium-density R2. Uh, this is approved rezone of South Bend Crossings, is what I understand is going to be called.
Yes.
And this is just for, uh, people's use, it's across from the doctor's office and the storage system and all that.
Mayor, commissioners, um, as you're, this is the first reading of this ordinance, and it was in front of the planning commission with a unanimous vote for the, the zoning that they approved from highway commercial to the section that backs the Highway 43 to R3, and the section that is immediately adjacent to Meadow Road as R2. And that was discussion that went back and forth over a couple of months with the planning commission. They agreed to, and I know we have had the ability, if we have questions, that we can put up pictures of the property on our screen. We have the zoning map here as well, I didn't know if there were anybody that, if anybody has, has signs to be to this, or if you're taking comments, but, um, this is something where you'll use your same findings of fact for the, basically, the land use in this area.
Absolutely.
We do have a, uh, approval from our professional planner, Loson Associates, with the main reason being that the four, uh, four-lane highway, um, R3 is appropriate because of the transportation that's immediately there. And, um, that's one of the reasons that they recommend that, and it was already, um, it was already zoned, um, commercial highway.
Correct.
So, as Kate mentioned, our, our planner gave a report to the planning commission. I have taken that report and incorporated it into the zoning ordinance that I drafted. Um, so you can see his comment of why they recommended this, these two rezones, because it's one piece of property that will end up being rezoned if it's zoned, if it's rezoned. Um, also, you'll see in the ordinance that I drafted, there's a section at the back which has blanks for you to fill in what your findings are, so, uh, you'll have to do that at some point, though, as Kate says, uh, this is where you use your orange, paint, green, or yellow card to, um, make your findings of fact and conclusions.
Okay. Entertained a motion? You need to pass by to zero, to planning commission.
This is not a public hearing?
No, no, the second reading will be...
Second reading will be... Yes, sir.
I'd just like to ask one question, on the R2, what, what do you, what is actually all intended, R2? Is it, uh, duplexes? Is it...
Are you asking what their plans are with the zoning?
We have a representative here, I'd like to...
My name is Nathan McCroon, I'm representing the, the landlord on this. And the R2 zoning, um, looking at y'all's requirements and outline that, that will only allow for a single-family home, and that's what backs up to the existing zoning that's there, so it's a 15,000 square foot block, what it is. So no duplexes.
So no duplexes, oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Any...
That's it.
Yeah, yeah. Any other, any other question?
Is that, is that right, Gerald?
Uh, three.
Yes, sir.
R3 is backs up against 43.
Yeah. The house ceiling could be townhouse and duplex, that's a connection.
So then, I've got a question about, uh, because a citizen comment, uh, contacted me asking about spot zoning for this. Uh, can y'all address that, like, between the strip commercial? And then R3, and then R2, kind of?
When you look at the appropriateness of zoning, you look at the zoning of the property within the city limits around that property. So my question to that would be, what are the areas around this property zone? And I think Rodney's prepared to address that.
If you can get that screen up again, so we can show you what's surrounding the property that you're looking at to put the zone.
The zoning board, Mr. Bobby, looked at that, and what we tried to agree to, we could have been showing you, is zoning the area according to what it's agending to, which is not spot zoning, because all of it's commercial. And I mean, you, you know, you don't want commercial in, right there with houses. And so, that's why it has three different zones.
It's already zoned commercial, so...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that you would be considering whether the zoning is appropriate is R3 and R2. And my understanding is that R3 touches another R3 property, and R2 touches another R3.
Got you, so it's, it's taking...
So it's taking on the zoning of.
R2 is what Meadow Road is and R3 is what the Mount Pleasant Nursing Home is.
So the green down there is the baseball field, right?
Yes.
All right. And then the nursing home.
That's the nursing home.
Okay. So we build a following measure. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
That was the reason that they the planning commission asked for R2 to be changed. So it would match what it was just that.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
I just like to say I appreciate the builder, you know, going with bring your family home.
You were asking him what the zoning said, right? Not what they're doing.
Well, I guess a little both. Because all two, you know, all two, you can have duplexes.
Okay.
And that's what I was asking him, was it gonna be duplexes? And he said no.
But you're not voting on a conceptual design. And it could change. You're voting on the zoning, the land use only, and it could change. Make sure you understand that.
That's all I was trying to make sure.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion that, oh, I don't guess I need to do this on the plan. I make a motion to accept ordinance 2022-1102. Now, minimum request zoning is in agreement with the land use planned for the area.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
Got a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I don't know if that was loaded up, that it could change or whatever. So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pay.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Mr. Harvey?
Yes. Order one.
Yeah.
Ordinance 2022-1103. Again, this is a first reading in ordinance revising and updating building related permit fees pursuant to the 2018 edition of the International Building Code as amended and as adopted by the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee. And I'll touch on this real briefly. Thank you. Provided as I had asked for, and you've got them in front of you. If you took a regular home that would have been built, it was the fee would have been $3,019. The new fee would be $34,39, which is an addition of $420.
That's a really big home, by the way.
Yeah, big home, 40, 300. The next one is USD, our tile plant. If you look at that one project out there, it would have gone up $21,000, which would be very nice to see in a commercial piece of property. And the last one, it would go up $200. And this was on a 2,000 square foot home. So Rodney, thank you again for getting this for us. It pretty much explains it out right out for us.
And at the study session, I think Philip did a good job of kind of letting you know the deep dive that we took with MTS to try and figure out where we have been with these kind of rates and the following ordinance that's right behind it, that we need to get our rates where we need to have them and be competitive. And also that the city's not losing money. And so that's why we have that in front of you at this time.
Okay.
And this is just first reading. There'll be two readings on both.
Correct, it is an ordinance. All right, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'm making a motion in favor. Ordinance 2022-1103 is presented.
Got them. And we got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Ordinance 2022-1104, an ordinance revising and updating the planning and zoning fee schedule.
And Mayor and commissioners, this is similar in that it's not the building permits, but it's the zoning ordinance. And it's got an exhibit A that has different things like site plan development and different types of fees and costs that are involved when somebody's bringing something in from the planning commission.
That's correct.
Anything I'm missing, Corey?
No, this one is procedurally a little strange because in 2019, after you adopted the new zoning ordinance, you adopted the fees inside that zoning ordinance. But when it was codified, it wasn't codified correctly. So the only weird thing in here is the section two that the ordinance 2019-1032 is being repealed. And that's just the old zoning fee. So this will be a standalone ordinance.
With a new service that should be corrected.
Yeah.
With Muni code.
Okay. Any questions? And this is a first reading. It'll be heard again, be a public hearing on it. Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept 2022-1104.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Second. Got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed. I'm assuming that means motion carries.
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't hear anybody vote for it. Resolution 2022-39, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to approve symmetry supplier addendum agreement for sale and purchase of national natural gas for Muni gas.
Mayor, commissioners, we have two items on the agenda that relate to Muni gas. And to avoid confusion, I'm gonna let Corey speak on this one that you're looking at right now. This is resolution 39.
As y'all know, all things natural gas is very hard to explain. But basically, Muni gas is a pass through company that gives the city a discount on natural gas because the city is the municipality. So we go through Muni gases program and we get a discount. And so this is symmetry and the supplier agreeing that we get Muni gases discount. This is a lot of complicated documents to give us a little bit lower price on gas.
And this is what we're trying this winter, correct?
No, this is something different.
That's later on the agenda.
You're gonna get that in age.
Yeah.
I'll be back for that one.
Yeah. Don't go far.
We've always used Muni gas. I can tell you that. Each week when I sign, I see Muni gas.
We're buying from them.
Yeah.
The Muni gas contract goes from 2016 to 2046.
That's correct.
This automatically renews every and everything.
Yep. Any other comments, questions? Entertain a motion?
Move that we accept resolution 2022-39.
Got a motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2022-40, a resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to apply for state of Tennessee environment and conservation water infrastructure investment program. And this is through R.
Yes, Mayor and commissioners, actually, you did pass this something similar last month where we had the South Central Tennessee Development District had asked us to pass something on what's been approved through the county, the funding to go to us. And when we went back and met with them and the county as well, the decision was made to have the resolution reflect the entire project, including city funds, because the city's getting a million, 50,000, and add that with the counties for the whole project of water sources. And so that has been done with this ordinance in front of you, 2022-40. And it was very last, one of the very last one. This resolution replaces resolution 2022-35 that you passed last one. And the only change is all the dollar amounts are higher because it includes the all the city money and the county money together.
Correct. Any questions or comments, Kate? You can then entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve resolution 2023-40 as presented.
Got a motion? We got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2022-41, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to adopt a health reimbursement arrangement, HRA.
Mayor and commissioners, this is something that came to us from a couple of employees two to three years ago, asking with the old retirement plan that they're under, if they if there was something we could offer to them where they could leave between the ages of 60 and 65 and assist them with health insurance, because that's the only thing that was keeping them from retiring. So what's in front of you is a health reimbursement arrangement, an HRA, where the way it's written is $500 a month could be set aside for these employees to pay for. They would come off our plan and they would go on their own plan through the Affordable Care Act. And all the items that are reimbursable are set by the federal government and it's all administered outside of us. It's not something that we're involved in. But they'd have $6,000 a year for the course of between 60 and 65. And those employees are the part of that Voya retirement plan that get large sums put in their retirement when they get to be of those ages. And so it's an overall, it's a cost savings to us for those type of retirees because of what we end up putting in their retirement. And it's totally their choice. They can stay and earn that money in their retirement or they can choose to leave and just have the HRA available to them. And it is available to their spouse. The amount doesn't change. It's still the same 500 a month. And it's only good between 60 and 65. And this is anyone who has five years of service within the city, is the ages of 60 to 65. This is something that's not available at all times. We would open a window and make it available and give the employees 60 to 90 days to say, yes, I want to participate. And then we would close the window and determine if we want to open it again at a future date. So it's not something that is a permanent benefit. They would continue to be able to do what they already can do and use vacation and sick leave to get them to their retirement. Again, all of this would be, it's all regulated by the IRS. It's a tax benefit to the employer. It's a tax benefit to the employee because it's tax-free money. Anything I've missed? I think that's it. We anticipate possibly two to three employees would take advantage of it if we opened up a window for 60 to 90 days later this year. Not a huge amount of people, but people that may want to feel like they want to go ahead and move on.
And to address that, we did say that this commission's creating a plan and then the city manager has the ability to open the window so long as it's in line with the budget of that year.
If it's not in the budget, we can't do it.
Can't do it. That's correct. Any questions?
Well, if three years down the road, we can't do it, does that lead them high, right?
Essentially, it's a benefit that's available when it's available. And we talked with the post-retirement benefit attorney. We went outside of Corey at the recommendation just of our health insurance provider, because there's people that that's their area of expertise. And I said things like, can you open the window and then close it? And you don't open it again? And so somebody else doesn't get that same benefit? And apparently, it's a very common practice with a lot of businesses. I would hope that we could continue to offer it as a benefit if it's something that we see that employees like. But it would be something that we'd have to know that's in the budget with the employees that have been here longer that are under that old plan. And we have to put quite a bit into the retirement. It's definitely a cost benefit to the city. When you start getting to the younger employees that are just on the Tennessee TCRS plan and it's just a match, we don't put that much into those employees. And then the costs may not outweigh it. So, you know, I don't know five years from now if we're gonna say that this is a great benefit for the city or not, but it's something that we can review. And if it's not in the budget, it would be in front of all of you again for another vote.
But I think what he's asking you, if someone's already on it and it's not in the budget down the road, they gonna be without it.
You have a window to make the selection.
I mean, they won't be able to draw the money.
I'm thinking like, all right, so say I'm gonna retire in December from the city. And I'm gonna do the plan, $6,000 a year.
And then you're 60 years old and it's good for five years?
Well, let's say I'm 55.
You can't do it.
Can't do it.
You gotta be 60.
Gotta be 60.
And if you choose it, we would have to fund it for those five years.
For five years.
I'm sorry.
We would have to.
I didn't understand.
That's what I was wanting.
I went a long way to tell you, but yes.
Well, I mean, that was good information.
If you're if you're in that window and you choose to take it, we have to fund it. Yeah.
I sat down and looked at this with Kate and I said, all right, how many do we have from this age to this age? And how many do we have from this age to this age? Right. And it was a decision made that we should go to 60 because of the number of people that we had that were qualified under that age. This happens every day in the corporate world. Yeah. Every single day.
But you opt in, you're good.
Yeah, once you opt in, that's a team has to have it.
If you don't opt in, you can't come back and complain later.
Okay, well, then I move that we accept 2022-41 as presented.
Got a motion? We have a second. Got a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Resolution 2022-42, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to authorize the city to engage. And Kate said she didn't know how to pronounce it, even though I did. So I'm gonna call it the PRI company to provide municipal building department services.
Mayor and commissioners, again, Philip kind of presented on this at the study session. And this is another area that we're recommending because of the growth in this area. Right now, the planning commission handles everything from the site plan. But once you go up in a commercial structure, not residential, once you go up above the ground, all those that site plan, like the huge development there at Landmark is with our two full-time employees in our codes department. And it's incredibly time-consuming. And most cities, including Spring Hill and Franklin and others, contract with this company that we use Bill's pronunciation of it. And what you're adopting here, if you adopt this, is the fees that they've outlined. And it's not fees that the city pays. It's fees that the developer pays directly to them. And so we're out of it. And this firm is the one that does the permitting for construction up for commercial development. I miss anything? Plan review for commercial development.
Yeah. Most.
Yes. That's where it gets extremely tedious and time-consuming.
Yes.
And a lot of cities that have staffs of 10 and 15 still use this practice. Again, it's not anything, we're involved in the money. It's that we tell the developer, this is the process and this is what you follow. And you pay these people and we're out of it.
You're basically adopting this company to stand in for you to review the plans.
Yeah.
Correct. Any questions, comments for Kate or Corey?
I've got one for Rodney. How you feel about?
How do I feel about it? It's a very big help. It's a very big help because I mean, you, the tile plant down here, take for example, you know, I've got a stack of plans two inches thick that I have to go through with a fine tooth comb. And with all the phone calls, with all the people coming into the office, once you get started, it's hard to, it's hard to manage all of that.
Yeah.
So, you know, you almost have to carry it home with you just to lay it out on my kitchen table just to make sure everything's working.
Good day. Thank you. I move that we accept. How do you want to pronounce it?
Resolution 2022-42 to engage that company to provide building department services.
Got a motion? We have a second. We got a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2022-43, a resolution of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee to authorize the city to purchase gas from Symmetry Energy Solutions LLC at a forward physical fixed price. For those of you that aren't familiar with that term, that is hedging.
So Mayor and commissioners, you know, we had a representative here, a study session, that kind of walked us through this process. And this drawing that you had in front of you was to take you into March of 2026. And what we said is what we'd like to do is get through this winter and do some price fixing on that and come back to you in like April and say, this is what the gas prices were. This is what we were able to purchase for. And this is the money that we save our customer, our residents, who have to pay to heat their homes. And if we're successful, possibly look forward in going for more years. But right now, we're just looking at getting through this winter and coming back. Because I know apparently in the past, well before I was here, there was some hedging done and the city lost some money. And that's not the business we want to be in. This is just a very small amount of our gas purchase. But we're thinking that we can save some money for residential customers.
We heard this. There's you not as well. Any questions?
Question I have, who's gonna determine when we do this?
Right now, we're only doing it for the winter.
That's correct.
I'm talking about.
And we're only doing 25% of it.
Yeah, I understand that part. But I'm talking about if we vote for it tonight, does it go into effect tonight? At what?
Yeah.
You're authorizing this. Practically what's gonna happen is Kate will talk to Zach and we'll find out what day is the best.
Because I mean, I mean, you know.
He said that one day went down AC.
Right.
So I mean, the next two or three days, it might be the best time to do it.
If you want to add that to the resolution, we could say that too. You're giving Kate the authority to work with Zach to find the best to try to predict the best prices.